Welcome to Soundside and welcome to KUOW's District Dash. I'm Libby Dankman alongside KUOW politics reporter David Hyde. Seven city council seats in Seattle will be decided this November, and we've invited all of the council candidates to answer the questions voters most want addressed. But we know that you're busy, so we're getting you those answers in 30 minutes. That's why we call it a dash. It goes fast. If a candidate goes overtime for an answer, you'll hear this. Or this. That, woo, he's got a little more there. That ferry captain and seagull are busy voters and they want us to stay on the clock. So today, we're headed to District Four, which will soon stretch from Wallingford to Wedgwood, including Roosevelt, Ravenna, Laurelhurst, Sandpoint, and the U District. Welcome to the candidates vying to represent District Four. Civil servant Maritza Rivera, welcome to you.
Thank you, Libby and David, for having me.
And tech consultant Ron Davis, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here.
So thank you to all of our candidates and our audience here for attending today. And let's get to the first question.
All right, we wanted to get straight to the issues, but you folks have been bringing up campaign finance. And so we're going to start there and hope that it doesn't come up for the rest of the debate. And Ron, we're going to start with you, just to get this out of the way. Every election, you know, your mailboxes get stuffed with campaign finance mail or campaign ads and campaign mailers. And it says right on there, there's a little thing that says paid for by so-and-so, because that's the law. The mailers also have to include the campaign's address. But your campaign sent out two mailers that didn't disclose. You got fined $1,000 bucks. And the head of Seattle Ethics and Elections says, this is a rare thing. This is Wayne Barnett, head of Seattle Ethics and Elections, saying, this doesn't happen very often. Campaigns put that stuff on there. So what's your message to the folks here for District Four voters about whether you take our city's campaign finance laws seriously?
Yeah, so we actually did disclose, we disclosed incorrectly. So we said it was from Ron and we used the campaign address. And Wayne and others on the commission have acknowledged it was obviously a clerical error. They said, of course, it's still non-compliant, so you need to accept a fine. And we said, of course, absolutely. We complied, we paid the fine, and we've apologized, just like grownups do.
I checked with Wayne Barnett about this, and this comes directly from him yesterday, saying, you broke the law with two ads in both of those ways, not disclosing, you know, the information that you should have. But what does this say, I guess, to District Four voters about how seriously you take rules and regulations sort of moving forward?
Yeah, you know, it says that while I made the choice to rely on a treasurer who is supposed to do compliance, I failed to double-check his work. And that was a mistake on my part. And again, we did identify it was from us, but we didn't do it in the compliant way. And so that was a mistake. I owned it and I paid the fine. And I'm happy to always take responsibility for mistakes we make. And I'm, you learn a lesson. It's the first time doing it. We're doing all this on a shoestring.
Got it. Maritza, a question for you. This also has been coming up. There's a lot of PAC or outside spending these days in Seattle City Council races, as everybody knows, more than there used to be, as a matter of fact. And this year, a number of wealthy individuals have been donating to a PAC that's backing your campaign. One of them is a Seattle real estate CEO named George Petrie, who also donates a lot of money to Donald Trump. Your campaign is not allowed to coordinate directly with these outside groups, but your opponents say, no, this is still an issue. District Four voters should know that a major Republican donor wants Maritza Rivera to win this race. That should tell you something, is what they're saying. How do you respond to that?
Yes, we are not allowed to coordinate with outside independent expenditures or PACs. We have nothing to do with that, and I don't know who those folks are. I will say that the ads that my opponent sent, that he got fined for, were portraying me as somehow a Trumper because of these independent folks that I don't know. And I want to be very, very clear that I am a lifelong Democrat. I've worked for President Clinton. I've worked for two Democratic mayors. I worked for a Democratic council member, Democratic executive, county executive, and the ACLU in town post 9/11, when we were doing know your rights education, when folks in the Middle Eastern communities were getting targeted by the FBI. So I just want to make that very clear. I'm a lifelong Democrat, and those allegations are untrue.
Maritza's a lifelong Democrat. She doesn't plan to govern as a Democrat. Ron Davis, you've made an issue. What's the issue?
Yeah.
30 seconds.
I've never said she's not a Democrat. I have identified that she's aligned with the positions of a bunch of Republican folks. And I would note that yesterday, the King County Democratic Party issued a statement saying that Maritza Rivera should stop using MAGA tactics, including disinformation and making up false claims about my campaign and about our positions. So I stand on that.
You want to respond to that?
Yes, I have made no false claims. Everything that I've said is true. My opponent, on the other hand, has some facts that he has posted on his website that he's calling fact-checking, but they're actually facts according to Ron. They're not independently checked and they're not accurate. So I stand by everything I've said. I've been consistent in this race all along about my values and about representing the District Four residents.
Let's wrap this up in 30 seconds, just the response to the stuff on your website.
Yeah, we have, it's footnoted, documented with videos and with text evidence of every claim we make. It's not according to Ron. It's according to videos that you can look at yourself. It's all, that's how fact-checking works, is we use objective sources of information, referencing either news stories or specific raw material that is, what do you call it? What do you, news people call it? Like the firsthand part that's before the news is done, right? So, original sources, excuse me. So the fact check is easy to check, and it's very straightforward.
Let's move on to drug law and policy in Seattle. Maritza Rivera, you told KUOW that you support the city's new drug law, which allows the city attorney to prosecute possession and public use of illegal drugs. But it contained no new funding for treatment and diversion options. And providers say our treatment system is already over capacity. With that in mind, why did you support the law?
Thank you, Libby. I supported the law because we need another tool in our toolbox for shutting down the open-air drug markets that we see in the D4, like on University Avenue and also downtown. The mayor and the city attorney was very clear that their interest was not jailing drug users, but making sure we were not having folks doing drugs in public. They want to funnel folks into services, as you talked about. And we need to shut down drug dealers because they're preying on folks, the unhoused especially, who are especially vulnerable. And that is making things unsafe for the city. I'm running to make Seattle safer. That's why I got into the race to begin with. And when I'm at the doors, voters are really concerned about public safety. So like I said, this is another tool in our toolbox. If I am elected, I will work with the council and the mayor to make sure we're standing up expanded diversion and treatment services because they are needed.
Ron Davis, you told KUOW that you were a maybe on supporting Seattle's new drug law. Proponents of the law would say that part of the goal is that nobody should be exposed to somebody smoking fentanyl at a bus stop, say. Do you agree with making arrests in that type of situation?
Yeah, in fact, I actually would take it farther than the mayor does. And if we put overdose prevention sites in around the city, I would not only say when it's a danger to others, but when anyone's having outdoor consumption. I've made that clear elsewhere. I was a maybe because what I've been told by people in the city is that this law essentially codifies PAC's past practice under the previous law. And when I talk to judges and people in the offices of civil rights and the people actually architecting law enforcement assisted diversion, they've all got a different story about whether we were actually throwing people in jail for drug use, which we know doesn't work and know doesn't make us safer, or we were actually getting them into treatment. So if I were on city council, I would have staff and I would have access to city data to actually be able to make that decision. And that is how I would predicate my decision. Does it follow the public health approach that the mayor promises? Great, let's do it. Does it follow the, you know, throw them in jail approach that his critics say he's guilty of? Then I wouldn't support it. What I do support is actually expanding the treatment services, because right now, it's only a first step and it's not going to lead anywhere if we don't have capacity.
Do you agree that the threat of arrest is a tool that's necessary in a city's toolkit in order to provide those services and expanded treatment options that you advocate for?
The threat of arrest can work when it's paired with the right options. So it kind of depends, right? Again, if it's with something like overdose prevention sites, it works actually quite well. The threat of arrest as a route into diversion can work. But when it ends up that we actually just end up throwing people in jail for being addicted, the public health data is really clear. World Health Organization, American Association for Addiction Medicine, Red Cross, Red Shield, sorry, Crescent, Cato Institute, Biden Administration. This is not controversial among people who've researched it.
Maritza Rivera, critics have called that prosecution without the guarantee of treatment a revival of the disastrous war on drugs. We know people of color are more likely to be arrested for low-level drug offenses. What do you say about the potential harms of criminalizing drug use in this law?
I would say that, again, the point of the law was not to prosecute folks that were using. It was another tool to shut down and prosecute drug dealers, actually, which my opponent tweeted he was opposed to prosecuting drug dealers and then quickly took the tweet down a few days later. So I would say that, you know, it's another tool for making sure we're shutting down the open-air markets, making sure, as you said, Libby, people are not exposed to drug use on the buses and on the light rail. I ride the light rail and I've seen folks using on the light rails. So, and being able to funnel folks into services, because people need services.
That's a ferry coming in. I'm sorry, that means time. 30 seconds to you, Ron Davis, to respond. Do you not believe in prosecuting drug dealers?
No, no, it's completely false. I did tweet something, which was a reference to the subset of drug dealers that, by the way, someone inside the Harrell administration told me they don't want to prosecute. And that's street-level subsistence level dealers who are addicted. Because if we don't get them into treatment, it turns out they just come back out on the street and prey on people continuously. And so what I was simply saying is that in that case prosecution's not the answer. A misinformation campaign was created by my opponent, so I did delete it, screenshotted all the shots, gave them to several reporters, and it's all on my website under the fact check site. You can look at the screenshots yourselves.
All right, Ron Davis, sticking with you. On policing, Mayor Bruce Harrell says the city needs 1,450 trained and deployable officers to serve the public. That's hundreds of more officers than we currently have today. I think it's below 1,000, somewhere in there. Hiring that number right now is nearly impossible. If you read the newspaper, there's a number of reasons for that. But as you know, the city sets targets all the time. We've got a comprehensive plan that's 20 years in the future. So, you know, we set targets. So the question is, based on where we are today, what's your vision for the future of policing in Seattle? Do you agree with Bruce Harrell that the city needs hundreds more police officers? Do you think maybe fewer officers? What's the right size for the police force?
The right size is for us to get as many as we can. But I think when SPD says, hey, 85% of jurisdictions in Washington State are below their hiring targets. We're off 27%, but Memphis is off 25, and Atlanta's off 27, and Tulsa's off 20. There is a national hiring crisis. Hundreds of thousands of people have left the profession. Setting a goal that is 20X what the professionals say is possible is not realistic. It's not honest with voters. I want to make housing affordable, and I'm not setting goals about the price of lumber or future interest rates either, because those things are out of my control. As a city, what can we control? We can try to hire up the department as best as we possibly can, and we can take their overloaded portfolio and start standing up things like behavioral health crises responses, standing up camera, more camera enforcement, making it so that other first responders could administer Narcan without them, so that we can get those fast, effective police responses to violent crimes, to drug trafficking, to break-ins in stores and in people's homes, and that we also can address the other issues. So my key goal here is fast response times, fast, effective response times. That's the true north, because it's achievable.
I want to get to Maritza in a minute, but just a follow-up, because I'm not sure I heard an answer to the question. The Harrell administration says 1,450 is the right target size that we're under policed compared to other comparable cities like Boston and other places. We set comprehensive plans all the time, 20 years out into the future. So the question is, you know, is 1,450 the right target for some time in the future? Yes or no? Or you don't want to answer that?
I don't not want to answer it. I don't know what the right number is. I know it's a lot more than we have, and I support getting as many as we can. I don't support making plans that we know we can't deliver.
Great, okay. Maritza, also on policing. You say you want to spend significantly more on Seattle's police budget, but the city is forecasting huge deficits, as you know, starting in 2025, over $200 million. And some people in the business community say that we shouldn't be raising taxes without first making budget cuts. So if elected, would you want to find ways of cutting SPD's budget or significantly increase Seattle's police budget, which is what you told KUOW, while making budget cuts elsewhere? So, you know, it seems like it might be a contradiction. What's your preference?
Yes, I would say that we definitely need a fully-staffed police department because we have 911 response times that are way too high, 12 to 15 minutes. They should be five minutes. And so, you know, we need to have the goal, I agree with the mayor's plan for hiring of more officers. I would say that we do need to be, we are stewards, when you're on the city council or as mayor, stewards of public funds. And we are accountable to the public for those funds. And we need to do a good job at making sure that the programs and the services that we provide have the outcomes that we want and the outcomes intended when we made those investments. So I do believe in holding ourselves accountable and when we're doing the budget process, making sure that we're reviewing the programs and the services for outcomes. If they're not working, then we should shift to other services that will accomplish those outcomes that we're looking to seek. And then if we need more revenue, then we can look to more revenue.
So is that a, yes, you would consider making cuts to SPD's budget, but you also want to spend significantly more in Seattle's police budget?
I wouldn't support cutting the police budget. We need to have a fully staff. So whatever, I mean, the mayor has made a proposal for the SPD budget, and I support that. Yes.
Yeah, okay, great.
Quick intermission, because, you know, this is a dash. We need a little break sometimes. 15 seconds to each candidate. We'll start with you, Ron Davis. If you have a free afternoon in District Four, where would you spend it?
Where would I spend it in District Four?
What would you spend it doing? Where would you spend it?
It's almost always either a time in Ravenna Park with my kids and my wife, playing in the woods and on the two playgrounds, or on our bikes on the Burke. Stop in maybe at Matt Market for one of those cookies.
Yep, chocolate chip cookies.
My girls and I like to go to Magnuson Park to have picnics. So I would say Magnuson Park picnic with my teenagers, who still want to hang out with me, is perfect.
Golden time. Okay, let's talk about trees. Ron Davis, earlier this year, Seattle City Council passed an updated ordinance regulating trees on private property. The ordinance protects smaller trees than before, 24 inches or wider, and allows developers to pay into a central fund if they can't replace a tree. Do you support the city of Seattle's new tree ordinance? Why or why not?
I'm kind of a meh on it. It needs some updates. So one is for our truly exceptional trees, I don't think you should be able to buy your way out. But there is also a way to avoid this insane dichotomy we have between housing and trees. There's going to be some tension because there's limited land. I don't want to pretend that's not the case. Oh, it's 30 seconds. But I do-
This is a minute, sorry.
Okay, thank you so much. Yes, but I do, so there are ways by doing things like brought-up zoning, but having more limited lot coverage requirements. We can preserve trees on land. And where we can also identify specific trees that are exceptional trees and say, even if that encroaches on your normal lot use, you are not allowed to build there, but here is a height bonus to make up for it. Because of this, most of the people who are out advocating on behalf of Luma, the cedar in Wedgwood, have joined my campaign or supporting my campaign. And the Master Builders Association, who wrote that legislation, are Maritza's PACs, one of their biggest funders.
Maritza Rivera, same question to you. Do you support the city of Seattle's new tree ordinance? Why or why not?
The tree ordinance did not go far enough. We really should not be, we should be working with developers to make sure that as development is going up, we preserve the trees. It is a false dichotomy that it is development versus trees. We can accomplish both, and we should be accomplishing both. So as developers are developing, we need to make sure that they are preserving as much tree canopy that's there. And we can work with them to do that. And so I'd like to see that ordinance go further. And when I talk to voters in the D4, they very much care about trees. And it's something that our community across Seattle really needs more of, is tree canopy. So we absolutely need to be working with developers to make sure that they're preserving the trees.
30-second follow-up for you, Ron Davis. Seattle's losing tree canopy. I heard you say that you don't think for truly exceptional trees, developers should be able to buy their way out. We do need thousands of new housing units, however. And developers say that one of the issues with building in Seattle is burdensome regulations. So my question is, when should a tree get in the way of building homes for people? Should it ever?
When we don't start, when we haven't, when we're done actually fixing the other dumb burdensome regulations we have that add $50,000 to $70,000 of cost per unit. When we eliminate the parking requirements that we have outside of villages, when we move to a single-track permitting process, which we currently have a dual-track permitting process that takes two or three years. When we eliminate some of our silly rules about upper and rear level setbacks. There is a ton, ton, ton of reform we could do to make it way easier to develop. I'm pro option six for the comprehensive plan. I am an urbanist. But trees are not the first thing we should cut down.
Is there a time, though, now, that an exceptional tree should get in the way of development?
I don't know. Like I said, we should be focused on actually doing the stuff that we know that wouldn't have this horrible outcome, right? Of cutting down these massive trees and could make it substantially easier to build. Let's start with that.
Maritza Rivera, tree canopy, of course, is vital to quality of life, to our climate future. What's your proposal for increasing tree canopy in Seattle?
We should, when we're amending the tree ordinance, for instance, the paying into the fund, I think we need to eliminate that. We really do need to work with developers and make sure that they are preserving the tree canopy when they're developing. And so that's one thing that we can do as we're looking at amending the tree ordinance, for instance. And, you know, and I'll say there are developments under HB 1110. Now, across the city, we're able to do duplexes, quadplexes, and sixplexes near transit centers. I've said about development in our district and across the city. It needs to be thoughtful and gradual because we need to make sure the infrastructure exists. And we need to make sure that we're also preserving tree canopy as part of that process. And I think it can be done.
Boy, that ferry horn.
Got a big jumper there in the front row, yeah, yeah.
I wonder which ferry that is. Maritza, staying with you on the question of homelessness. You told KUOW that you support Mayor Harrell's approach to removing encampments. That's increased, you know, since the pandemic. Critics say we're going too fast. There's not enough places for people to go, like tiny homes, like shelters. Certainly isn't enough permanent supportive housing. So what's your response to that? There aren't places for people to go. Are we sweeping or removing encampments too quickly?
I do support the mayor's proposal. I think that we need to create more temporary housing solutions for folks, like temporary sheltering, hoteling, and tiny homes. I know that the tiny homes have been working. I've talked to the firefighters. I'm very honored to have their endorsement. And they tell me, you know, the tiny homes are really working. They hardly ever have to respond to any activity at the tiny homes. You know, it's inhumane to leave people living on streets. And we do need to scale up the temporary options while we wait for permanent supportive housing to be built. But we absolutely need to get folks off of the streets for their safety and the safety of the neighborhoods. And so we just, we do need to scale up the temporary housing options. And KCRA is responsible for the emergency response. They're well-funded, and I think that they need to do a better job of figuring this piece out as well. And we need to work with them on that.
So are we moving too fast currently in terms of removing encampments? Sounds like the answer is no.
I don't think we're moving too fast. I think we do need to clear these encampments, especially the dangerous ones. I mean, there's drug activity in these encampments. Sex trafficking, women and youth are particularly vulnerable. And so we really do need to get people out of those encampments and into temporary housing if there is no permanent housing for them. So yes.
All right, Ron Davis, same topic. You've said that we need to make more investments in tiny homes, in emergency shelters. And the region is making those investments, but it's not happening fast enough. There's about 50,000 people now, by some counts, in the region who are without homes. So what about short-term? If a parent in District Four comes to you and says, Ron, there's an encampment right next to my kid's school. I'm concerned about this. I'm worried about it. Would you say to that parent, you know, I'm going to advocate to remove that camp quickly, even though I know there aren't tiny homes, there's no places for those folks to go right now? Or would you say that homeless encampment has to stay there?
Yeah, it depends on the circumstances. One thing I would say is, things like tiny homes are actually very easy to stand up quite quickly if we do the work right. And so Mayor Harrell's policy, at least officially, is to only clear encampments when they offer shelter. There are, of course, reporters who've called into question whether this is what actually happens. So, you know, my answer is, is no. I don't think we should generally be clearing encampments if we don't have housing to offer. I don't think we wait until we have housing for all the people all over the region to do it. And that 50,000 number is not representative of the people who are actually sleeping outside, which is more like 7,000, and that's in the entire county. So it depends, right? It depends on the situation. But I don't believe in sweeps. The mayor says he doesn't believe in sweeps. I think sometimes the mayor or administration may engage in things that would be called sweeps. So, but I agree with what the mayor at least aspires to, which is, hey, we need to offer housing and not just push people from park to park. Because that is a very expensive way to have people stay outside and continue to be in danger and sometimes a threat to others.
This brings, my follow-up, I guess, is you're saying that you agree with what the mayor wants to do, but not what he's actually doing?
I'm agreeing with what the mayor even says he's doing.
Says he is doing, but he's not doing it.
Well, I would say people like Erica Barnett or some of the other reporters that you know have done some reporting and said, sometimes they actually just sweep encampments. I know Manisha Harrell frequently said, no, we don't. So I, of course, am not there myself. I don't know. I do support what Mayor Harrell says he's doing. And I also find it notable that many journalists are questioning whether that's what's actually happening. So what I support is the only thing that we know is effective, which is going into encampment, getting people housing and services, and then they clear.
We've already talked about the projected $220 million budget deficit in 2025. Ron Davis, how do you propose we bridge that gap? Are new taxes in your plan?
Yes, there's new taxes. So while we could get, I mentioned some ways earlier, we could save $50,000 to $70,000 per affordable housing unit. I think we should be doing some serious reform at the KCHRA. There's a number of, we could be more efficient with our policing resources. That's because we need more affordable housing and more people showing up to 911. None of those things and saying the word accountability over and over again will make $220 million appear, which means we need incremental new taxes. Our taxes as a percentage of GDP at the state and local level have actually declined in the last 10 years. Most people don't feel that because our taxes are also the most upside-down in the country. So I do advocate for expansions to progressive revenue, including a small adjustment to jumpstart, Alex Peterson's suggestion of topping up the tax on extreme capital gains, a vacancy tax, and some other items like that to cover that budget deficit and make the investments we need to get behavioral health first crisis responders to emergencies and to get the drug treatment capacity that we need.
Maritza Rivera, would you be open to any new taxes to help bridge the budget deficit? And if not, what kinds of cuts do you want to see happen?
I think accountability is really important, and I'll give you an example. KCRA, the King County Regional Housing Authority, is very well-funded. They've over-promised, under-delivered. And an example of what they have more recently done is they pulled the plug on Partnership for Zero, which was to address homelessness encampments in the downtown corridor. So there is funding there, and we are not, we are not getting the results and the outcomes that we need. So this is what I mean about accountability and the importance of accountability. In terms of revenue, I'd be open to a capital gains tax, for instance, in order to get revenue to close the gap if we can't find money within the existing budget. But we do need the accountability, because I think this current council's knee-jerk reaction is to just raise a tax instead of looking, are we spending the taxpayer money well? Are we getting the outcomes that we're paying for, if you will? And because when we don't get the outcomes, it's people who are suffering. We're not providing the service if we're not meeting those outcomes.
Where specifically, just a quick follow, 30 seconds here. Where specifically do you think there is waste or efficiencies to be found? You talk about accountability. Where, we talked about SPD, it's not there. What departments or what personnel are potentially a waste of money?
Yeah, I would say, for example, I use the KCRA example. That, I think, is an example of waste. There may be other programs in the other city departments that are not providing the outcomes that are intended. As a city council member, you can work with the mayor and the directors to hold them accountable and have them do the exercise of, tell us how your programs are doing. And then make sure that the outcomes are there. Because it's something that departments don't do very well, always on the back end. Unless the city council member asks specifically about a specific program, you don't get the back end, how are things doing?
A question to you, Ron Davis. You know, we talked about the regressive tax system that exists in Washington State and Seattle voters exist under, Seattle residents exist under. How would you prevent new taxes from burdening lower-income people more?
Yeah, the specific taxes I identified are extremely progressive, and so they won't burden lower-income people more. It's straightforward, right? Those are progressive taxes, and they are legal under our current constitutional regime. I'd also like to note that even if we hold the King County Regional Homelessness Authority accountable and get that 86 million back, we still need to spend it on homelessness. Or we're just going to dump 86 million in spending on homelessness. That doesn't do anything to fill a $220 million budget gap.
Do you want to have a quick response there?
Yes, we need to be able to, yes, I agree that we need to use it for homelessness, but we should have the outcomes that we're paying for with that money, which was not, is not happening now. We don't have enough. Well, I know KCRA is not responsible for the permanent housing, but on the temporary housing front, we don't have enough sheltering for the folks that need it. Temporary sheltering, I mean, emergency sheltering. And so we need to, yeah, we need to use that money for that purpose. But we need to have those outcomes, and we don't- those outcomes and we don't have them now.
All right, this is the last part of the debate. Can we get a fairy sound? The lightning round.
Oh, no, not another one.
We're gonna, in this lightning round, review a little bit of your tax ideas to start. Remember, there's this giant budget deficit coming. There's some ideas on the table.
We're talking tax policy in lightning style.
Lightning, yeah, it's just yes or no on these.
We're ambitious.
Would you be likely, would you be likely to support a high pay CEO ratio tax? Ron Davis?
I'm a maybe on that one.
Maritza Rivera? The high pay CEO ratio tax on business?
Oh, high pay?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Maybe, maybe. City level capital gains tax?
Yes.
Yes.
City inheritance tax?
Maybe.
Maybe.
Tax on vacant property?
Yes.
Maybe.
A traffic congestion tax?
Maybe, depending on how it's structured.
Yes.
All right, moving on from taxes to spaces. This is sort of an either or. Wedgewood Broiler or Ivors Samrin House?
Well, that's a mean, mean question.
Ron Davis.
You gotta make an answer.
Ron Davis.
Yes.
We need you on the record for this.
I'm an Ivors guy.
Ivors.
All right. U Village or UW Campus?
Oh.
You first this time?
Yeah, sure.
UW Campus.
I walk through UW Campus and run through it every day as a first source of joy, definitely.
Maritza, I'm going to stay with you. On-street parking or bike lanes?
Bike lanes.
Bike lanes. Here's one. Current D4 Representative Alex Peterson says the council's got enough to do, shouldn't be wasting time passing symbolic statement sort of resolutions on foreign policy, global affairs, as it has done over the past few years. Do you agree or disagree with current D4 Rep. Alex Peterson on that?
Yes, yes, he's right.
Um, yes.
All right. Who did you vote for in the 2021 mayor's race? Ron Davis?
Justin Farrell in the primary and Bruce Harrell in the, I'm sorry, no, and Loretta Gonzalez in the general.
Bruce Harrell.
Bruce Harrell. 2021 city attorney's race. Ann Davison, Nicole Thomas Kennedy.
And TK.
Ann, Ann Davison.
Do you support the expanded use of automatic enforcement cameras in D4 to protect pedestrians?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, last question. You're meeting somebody on the Ave. Latte or bubble tea?
I'm a coffee guy.
Latte.
All right, we have candidate closing statements now. One minute for each candidate. We flipped a coin ahead of time. Ron Davis, you go first with your minute.
Yeah, I am focused on making Seattle a place people can start a career, age, raise a family and age comfortably and happily and safely at home. I have a history of winning awards at Harvard Law School for doing policy work, of working with statewide organizations passing legislation like HB 1110, other climate legislation and, and transportation legislation. I also have a history as a dealmaker in the, the tech world. I started a company after law school, worked with some folks from MIT and Stanford and, and since selling off that company and brought in by other CEOs, when their ability to make sales and do, and big enterprise deals goes off the rails, my job is to coach people on dealmaking.